Excuse me, amendments and voting. So while a council member is participating virtually, then that means that all of our votes tonight will be taken by a roll call. So just wanted you to be aware of those changes from our regular process of conducting a meeting. So at this point, I will ask our town clerk, if she will, to call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I declare there's a quorum and all of our council members are present with Mr. Dellinger participating remotely. So I'm going to recognize now Mayor Pro Tim Elmo Vance, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance, and he also will introduce the person who will offer our invocation. Mr. Vance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Mayor, council and members gathered, I would like to introduce Reverend Stanley Byrd, who is the pastor of Kingdom Harvest located in Garner, North Carolina. Reverend Byrd will provide us with the invocation.
Thank you, Councilman Vance. Mayor, honored to share in these proceedings. Let us pray. Father, we honor your name once again and thank you for keeping us all day long and bringing us safely to this point. We ask for your presence and guidance in all that shall be said and done this evening to your honor and to your glory. We pray, God, that as you, your power reigns in this place, God, that you will guide every decision that will be made, God, with your wisdom that reflects your goodness and illustrates your love for humanity. We pause for a moment to lift up those who have tragically been shot down in Raleigh. Our hearts are saddened that what has broken our heart from afar has now come to our doorstep. So we pray for those grieving families. We pray for the Raleigh Police Department and police officers everywhere, first responders. We pray that you continue to protect them, guide them, strengthen them, and encourage their hearts and encourage the hearts of our community. We thank you in advance, God, for how you're going to show yourself strong this evening. And when all is said and done, we'll give you and you alone all the honor, the glory, and the praise that's due only you. It is in your matchless name we do pray and give thanks. Amen.
Amen. Reverend Byrd, if you don't mind, before you have a seat, we oftentimes give ministers an opportunity to say a few words about their church and any activities or things going on there. Let me personally thank you for remembering our sister city of Raleigh. I was gonna ask for a time of silence just in honor of those victims, but you properly prayed for those already. But tell us anything you want to adjust about your ministry there.
Well, Kingdom Harvest got started here in Garner in '09. Currently, we still serve the Garner area. We have a strong partnership with Vandora Springs Elementary and Garner Middle School. We provide them, the students and the teachers, resources throughout the year. Especially during the pandemic, we stepped in and provided hotspots when there was a void there. We're constantly working with the county to address affordable housing issues, and you know, we're doing whatever we can to spread God's love and inspire hope to all those that we encounter. So we are honored to continue to serve the community of Garner and at large, and are thankful for you allowing me to share what we're doing in the community.
Thank you for doing that, and thank you for the work you do in our community. Thank you for taking time out to be with us this evening, sir. And thank you, Mr. Vance. So the first portion of our meeting is petitions and comments. This is the portion of meeting received, comments from the public. On items not included in the agenda, citizens should sign up in advance, ideally with the town clerk, prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take actions or deliberate on subject matter brought during the petition and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Ms. Clerk, I don't have any listing of any persons who signed up in advance. Is that correct? Okay. Did any person who is in the audience now come with the express purpose of desiring to speak to council on a matter? If so, if you'll raise your hand, I will recognize you. Okay, sir, if you will come to the podium and state your name and address, and we will ask you to keep your comments in the range of three to five minutes or no more.
Trust me, it won't be that long.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is having a good day and getting ready for winter. I'm Keith Smith. I live in the Gibson Pond Community, 203 Gibson Drive, Garner, North Carolina. And of course, as you know, they want to change the zoning from the single, I think it's single-family residential to multi-family residential. And the only concerns that the community have, and I speak on behalf of maybe seven other communities.
Mr. Smith, let me interrupt you just briefly. Our comments policy would suggest that persons are commenting on something not on the agenda. It's my understanding that this is an agenda item, and you would have an opportunity to speak at that time if that's what you wanted to speak to us about.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So you could save it for a little later.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, was there anyone else cared to speak on some other topic? Okay, hearing done, then we will move to the adoption of the agenda. Council, you have that before you, and we'll take a roll call vote on this. So is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll for the approval of the agenda? Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Approved. Second. Okay.
Councilmember Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Thank you all. So we have approved the agenda. I'm not aware of any particular presentations this evening, Mr. Manager, anybody?
We don't have any.
Okay.
None to add?
Thank you. All right, council, you have before you the consent agenda. I believe there are three items on there. I'm sure you've noted all of those. I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Motion properly made and seconded. Again, Madam Clerk, we'll ask you to do a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. So the consent agenda has likewise been approved. We'll now go to public hearings. We have three, four of those. The first one is the Walters Buffalo Development Agreement. And I'm going to note that since this was a continuation from a previous meeting, and it's my understanding that this is not yet ready to be heard further this evening unless council desires to reopen the public portion of the hearing, then a motion will be in order to continue this to a subsequent meeting. Did I state that correctly, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, at this time, we do not have the revised draft ready for your review and adoption. So I would recommend that you just continue it indefinitely. Ideally, we would be able to bring this back in conjunction with the rezoning application, which is ready for your review once this development agreement is finalized. So rather than continue it to a date certain, just wait until we have the appropriate time after you have an opportunity to review the revised agreement.
Okay, council, you've heard the recommendation of our town attorney, and I'm confident that even though we may not continue to a date certain, that we will be as expeditious as possible in getting it back properly before the council and taking further action on that. So a motion would be in order at this point in time to continue that particular hearing to an indefinite time.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton and Mr. Vance. So on this issue, we will take a roll call vote, and I'll ask the town clerk to do the call.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Behringer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes unanimously, and I would observe that if anyone came here this evening anticipating having a chance to speak on this issue, you will be able to do that certainly when this matter comes back before council. But for now, it has been, it has been continued until a date that will be determined. Okay? All right, the next item is a public hearing, conditional rezoning CZMP 2105. And I will recognize, I believe, Mr. Trezenberg for this matter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Give me just a moment. I'm gonna grab a couple of things here. That's its official name. There has been, you've probably heard, Tryon Point Apartments. But we are using 1509 Creech Road for the zoning case. Hopefully, that'll help us keep it a little more clear from the Tryon Point subdivision. But here's your general case information. The applicant is Kelly Development. You see the Yap family there as the owners. 1506 Creech Road is the location we're talking about, and the site encompasses just shy of 18 acres. This is a Tier Two master sketch plan with written conditions request. The current zoning at the time of application was R-20, and they were asking to go to multifamily two conditional for the development of 176 multifamily units at a density of about 9.8 units per acre. The use restrictions, along with architectural and other conditions, are also proposed, and we'll go over those. But here is the general site location. Creech Road coming up from Garner Road. Creech Road Elementary is just down the ways a little bit. Coming up to the bend, Creech veers off this way. Sandiford goes straight ahead. Here is the Tryon Point subdivision, Gibson Pond, Gatewood, and Tryon Road. The future road extension would be coming through here. So here is a snapshot of the site location coming down Creech. So this will be on your right, heading south into town. The adjacent zoning and land use, part of this is in Raleigh's jurisdiction up here. Their zoning is R-4, or, I'm sorry, our zoning is R-4. Theirs is R-6, both single-family types of districts. To the south, currently here, we have R-2. To the east, again, a little bit of R-2, but mostly R-4 once you get particularly across Creech Road. And then to the west, we have R-4 for the Tryon Point subdivision, and then some R-2 for the church property that's a little further west. Not a whole lot of historical zoning, rezoning activity in this area. One old case from 1997 involved Hunter's Mark, which is, you know, further, further down the way. And then another one along Wilmington Road as well here in 2021, for, I believe, the townhomes. So since we've adopted the new UDO, the site is now zoned R-2 instead of R-20. That was the equivalent district. And you see kind of the list of permitted uses there currently in the R-2 district, very much skewed towards residential and some open space uses, along with some other office and institutional type things, agriculture, churches, et cetera. The proposed zoning at the time was, would have been multifamily two. Under the new ordinance, it'll be multifamily B. Those districts are designed to create and maintain the higher-density residential neighborhoods, primarily with the focus on multifamily dwellings. Permitted uses include clusters, apartments, townhomes, condos, duplexes, and triplexes. The permitted use table, they are restricting it down to just the multifamily, triplex, and higher use categories. So that would be the only thing allowed. Here we have, they have committed to a clubhouse, a couple of playground areas, since the site would be divided by the future Tryon Road. It is important to provide some things on both sides of that future three-lane divided facility. Residential buildings will not exceed four stories, but I think several are planned to be at least, to be four stories. The residential buildings will have a brick veneer from the ground to at least two feet above grade. The primary wall materials shall also continue to be brick and fiber cement. We haven't gone into great detail as staff with some of these architectural conditions because this is a project that would go through the state's LIHTC tax credit project, and they have a very extensive list of architectural requirements that is typically higher than most jurisdictions would ask for. So we know that and feel confident that there's a high level of attention to quality and detail through that program, so we've not overemphasized that as part of this proposal. They have agreed to limit surface parking being no closer than 40 feet to the Gibson Pond subdivision, so ensuring that there'll be green space and buffering in that area. The building shall also be located no closer than 100 feet to the Gibson Pond subdivision. So it does give room for some building, then parking, then green space. The ground floor area of any single building shall not exceed 25,000 square feet. So these aren't apartments that take up a huge floor space. They do tend to be smaller in their, in their appearance and overall massing. And the ordinance lighting requirements will be met with standard industry fixtures, so no upgraded fixtures proposed at this time. The area of the community is predominantly single-family at this time, with a lot of tracts in forestry. You do also have the cemetery in the Raleigh side of the jurisdiction across the way. As noted, we have Gibson Pond and Gatewood, Rustful Pines and Hunter's Mark are subdivisions, single-family in the area. And here again is the Wilmington Townhomes Project, which showed up in the rezoning table, was approved at seven and a half units per acre. Again, can't emphasize enough, though, that the character of this area will be heavily influenced by the extension of Tryon Road, eventually to Sunny Brook on the other side of 40, which will eventually complete an arterial link from South Raleigh to East Raleigh. Traffic in this area, just again, some background traffic data from NC DOT that they collect every two years. The only road that we have that data for is Creech. For a two-lane facility, that's still fairly light, although I'm sure that there's certain times of the day where it's heavier than others. The TIA did reveal from DOT that they will require at Creech Road in the future East Tryon Extension, a construction of a 150-foot northbound left. So if you're heading out of Garner towards Raleigh, there'll be a dedicated left of 150 feet, turning off of Creech to East Tryon. The neighborhood meeting identified 41 folks, but it did reach a much wider audience. And so the neighborhood meeting was held at Creech Road Elementary School Picnic Shelter, so not far away. And about 34 properties were represented in attendance, both from about half within the notification area and half from outside. And here is the master plan proposal at this time. Again, Creech Road, here's the future East Tryon Road extension. In working with the applicants, we've asked that the buildings be pulled up a little closer to Tryon as opposed to Creech. Tryon being a new road that will have a new look and feel versus Creech Road, trying to preserve some of that look and feel that exists today. We have the clubhouse on this side with the pool. But over here, we also do have some open spaces for some informal and formal play areas and recreation. Each side has its own dedicated dumpster, so folks won't have to cross the street to dispose of their trash. The stormwater pond would be over here. This whole section of the site goes for quite a ways. You do have wetlands and a Neuse River buffer in this area, so it kind of makes sense that this continue both now and in the long term, being pretty, pretty heavy and large preservation area. The stormwater pond would be located there. The project will have two points of access off of Creech and two off of Tryon, so I'll just go back to that. There will be ride-in, ride-outs for both sides off of Creech, and then there will be a main entrance on both sides of Tryon Road about midway. Creech Road will be widened to half of a major collector with that 150-foot left turn lane that was dictated by the TIA. The Tryon Road extension will be constructed also to a major collector street cross-section. Campo has done modeling for this area, and it's actually not an area in which they anticipate the need for a five-lane facility. Because the densities in the broader area are relatively lower compared to other sections of Tryon Road, where the density is higher not only right up on Tryon Road, but also for some distance off of there, the modeling is not showing that it needs to be five lanes through this area. In fact, I think the, up until somewhere on the Sunny Brook extension is before it will go back to, to five lanes. Pedestrian access will be accommodated with sidewalks along both sides of the, of all the streets, and sidewalk will also extend along the frontage of Creech Road. The tree cover sliding scale is our new sliding scale from 18 to 20 will be met. As I noted before, in that, in the site plan, we're looking at at least 22% of canopy coverage just with preservation. So the additional new plantings that they'll be doing on the rest of the site will raise that percentage canopy cover even higher. Perimeter buffers will be 35 feet along the perimeter areas with 15-foot wide street buffers. That's where your street trees and any screening vegetation of parking will take place, and those street trees will be every 40 feet. Here again's a little wider outshot of the area, so you see pretty significant floodplain through here. Tryon will actually come this direction. It will cross, come a little further south before it comes back and crosses again. That has been reviewed by the Army Corps as the recommended route. So we do have the wetlands and all that area will be protected. Raleigh Water and Sewer Service will be serving the site. We do have the water line in Creech, so it's immediately adjacent. And we also have the existing sewer outfall here that they will be able to tie into as Just again, a reminder of the things that we will continue to check as staff for compliance as this project would move through preliminary site plan review if the zoning is approved. And again, just our standard reminders of the planning commission's charge to look at plan consistency, your future responsibility to look at the reasonableness of the request, and our public hearing recommendation tonight is that once you have heard comments, questions, concerns from the general public, to go ahead and refer this to the planning commission. Staff would continue to work with the applicant to try to address anything that's brought up here tonight, and continuing at the planning commission before it comes back to you. And with that, I'm finished with my presentation. The applicant does have a presentation that they would like to give as well.
So let me see, if council has any questions for you. I'll ask Ms. Behringer to start if she has anything. Okay, Mr. Vance, anything?
Questions?
Okay. Mr. Dellinger, questions for Mr. Trezenberg?
No questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Jeff, on condition seven and eight, they talk about the parking areas will be located no closer than 40 feet to Gibson Pond subdivision, and the buildings no closer than 100 feet. That's to the property, the back property line, that's where that distance is. And you said there's a 35, I think you just stated a 35-foot buffer perimeter, so the parking will be 40 feet from that Gibson Pond subdivision, is what we're hearing.
And I think, I think they've planned for a little bit more than that, but just to give themselves enough, you know, wiggle room, they've committed to 40, and the building's no closer than 100. Yeah.
And the clarification, again, you talked about the Tryon Road extension. Eventually, that is going over, you said, and that's going to connect to Sunny Brook. It's not going straight over to Rockaway. It will come into Sunny Brook, and which will tie into the intersection of Sunny Brook and Rockaway. That's the long-range plan.
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, all right.
If you need me to bring that up on a map, I'll be glad to do that after.
No, no. No, no. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Nothing at this time.
Anything? Okay. Satisfied. Mr. Trezenberg, I believe you said the developer would like to make a presentation. I guess that person would be next in order, so that person would come forward and introduce himself. That would be great. Name and address will be fine. Thank you.
My name is Ted Heilbron. My address is 912 Village Crossing Drive, Chapel Hill, North Carolina, 27517. First and foremost, I want to thank you, mayor and council, for your consideration of our project. We also want to thank staff and Jeff, who have worked closely with us to navigate some tricky approval deadlines with North Carolina Housing and Finance Agency, and the Gibson Pond subdivision folks who have met with us twice and have engaged in very reasonable conversation about the project, and we look forward to continuing to working with them to address any of their concerns. There we go. I'll be brief tonight. I know some of these slides and remarks follow on the heels of the discussion that had, we had at the work session from late September. We are an affordable housing development partnership that are active across the state of North Carolina. Our hopeful development here in Garner is one of a handful that we're currently working on. Other cities include Rocky Mount, Wilmington, Durham, and our business is building specifically affordable apartments funded with the low-income housing tax credit administered by North Carolina Housing and Finance Agency. And so we're proposing here, which, again, working on a name other than Tryon Point to cut down any unintentional confusion, but a 176-unit, 4% low-income housing tax credit project. It'll consist of one, two, and three-bedroom units, and it's going to serve the folks that make up the labor force and the workforce here locally in Garner. Folks who, because of what's gone on over the last three years and longer, are having trouble finding housing at prices that are affordable. Just for clarification, we're just outside of the current town boundaries, and we'll look forward to annexing in, in the context of this application. I'd like to ask our civil engineer, Chris Bostick from Kimley Horn, to just give a few remarks about the site plan. They've worked closely with Jeff in kind of getting us to where we are with the drawing you see in front of you now.
Okay, we'll do that, and then we'll have questions for either of you after this presentation.
Thank you. Chris Bostick with Kimley Horn, I just have a couple of brief comments. It's been good working with Jeff on this project. Jeff hit most of the high points going through the, the presentation that he made, but I'll just kind of reiterate two things. One, as, as part of our coordination with staff, we did take the two buildings that are closest to Creech Road and orient those and put them up toward, toward the frontage of Tryon Road. Again, to give that, the new part of Tryon, an urban feel, that was an important thing from planning, so we've, we've addressed that. It also pulled the building further away from the subdivision to the west, so I think that accomplishes a couple of objectives. And then secondly, too, I'll just reiterate what Jeff said, that, you know, from an overall standpoint, we're, we're doing a lot to save trees out there, a lot of conservation area on the southwest corner of the site, as you can see pretty well at the slide, and Jeff was showing that off of his page before, but stream buffer, wetlands preserved, and then, of course, exceeding the required amount of tree canopy. So, thank you.
Okay, yeah, were you going to make some further presentation at this point?
Happy to answer any questions council has.
So, okay, Mr. Vance, anything?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger, any questions for either one of these?
Yeah. Yes, this may be for the applicant and for staff, noticing that there are, there's a right-in, right-out on the west side, I guess more north, and then a right-in, right-out on the other end of the property, and then of the Tryon extension part that's to be built, there's only, you can only make a left turn onto Creech Road on that Tryon extension portion, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, as far as making a left-out movement onto Creech Road, the only place that you could make that movement would be from the Tryon Road extension, correct?
So, I guess my question is, what sort of intersection control is there? Is it a stop sign? And then the other question is, what is the plan in the future as that corridor continues to develop further down Creech Road towards Garner with more developments coming in for signalization, and what's the threshold? So that we're planning ahead so that it's not, sneak up on us that it's kind of a dangerous left turn coming out of there?
Sure, and, and I can address that first and let you know that if, if we get into a really detailed traffic question, we do have our esteemed traffic engineer, Law Overcash, to answer that, but I'll, I'll try to keep it simple, which is what I can explain at this point. So that, that intersection would be stop-controlled at this point in time. DOT, when evaluating an intersection for a signal, goes through a certain warrant analysis, you have to have a certain volumes that would need to exist on the side street, which is Tryon Road in this case, and I think, until Tryon would be further extended and there would be other traffic on Tryon from other developments, that, that signal would not warrant. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. I guess then my concern is, it's more a problem if there's more traffic on Creech Road than that people can't make, maybe a safe left turn onto Creech at all. You see what I'm saying?
Sure, I, I still think, Law, you want to get up and maybe address that in a little bit more detail?
Law Overcash with Kimley Horn, four-twenty-one Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Yeah, from the TIA, the hundred-and-seventy-six units generates less than a hundred trips during the peak hour. The majority of those were assigned to go south towards Garner Road, so your predominant movement coming out of the subdivision will be a right turn coming out of the subdivision. As Chris mentioned, to, you know, warrant a signal, we'd have to be looking at traffic volumes turning left out of at least a hundred, so that's going to be a, a long time down the road. Once Tryon Road is extended and connected, even then, Creech Road eventually, and the plan is to be straightened out and go connect to Wilmington Road, which would get you out to Jones-Sausage. So the, you know, that curve that's to the east, hopefully one day will be straightened out, and, and so that's just going to kind of change the dynamic in this area, but I don't anticipate a signal there anytime soon. Where they located the Tryon Road extension is on a tangent, so the site distance should be good. Trees along that area will be cleared out, and you have, you know, good visibility coming out of the subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Behringer, anything? Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
And Mr. Singleton?
Well, I drive that way quite a bit to avoid Jones-Sausage Road back up. I go down two-sixty-four and sixty-four a lot during the day, so I come out here all the time. A signal would be a lot better at, at the intersection of Sandford and Creech where it splits, but anyway, that's another story. Question on the most eastern right-in, right-out, how close is that to the Gatewood, entrance into the Gatewood subdivision? It doesn't, I don't see it extended on the picture down here. I know it's not far from there, and I know it's a safe distance, but I'm just curious how close that is, because that movement out of that subdivision, of course, is right-in, left, which is right into the curve.
Probably take a, we can, sorry, we can probably take a quick look at that and get back to you.
Okay. And I know it's, I know it's, it looks like a reasonable distance, but I just, I just was curious. It's not going to, it shouldn't affect anyone coming out of that neighborhood, I just want to make sure. I'm sure it's already been looked at.
Jeff looks prepared.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Jeff. Magic of technology, right?
It's unbelievable, I'm telling you.
Okay, was there anybody else for the applicant who had planned to make a presentation beyond what we've heard? Hearing nine, councilor, you're pleased with those questions. This is a, this is a public hearing, so is there any person in the audience who came to speak on this particular item? Was that you, sir? All right, come back up, give us your name one more time if you don't mind.
My name is Keith Smith, two-oh-three Gibson Drive, Garner, North Carolina, from the Gibson Pond community, and of course, I don't want to be redundant, by the way, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, but I don't want to be redundant, but Councilman Dellinger and Singleton addressed the, one of the main issues that we had, and that was traffic. And the other one that we had, and we spoke with the developers, and thank y'all for being here tonight as well, and that was a retainer wall. I know you have like a thirty-five-feet vegetation barrier or buffer, and we would like to have a buffer wall between that Gibson Pond community and the new multifamily residential community, simply because, you know, we've been in the community for thirty-some years, and now we have to look at our backyard for other things, and, and we're not, you know, opposing the growth of our community, but at the same time, we lived in such a tranquil environment for so long, and it's kind of hard to anticipate all of the new citizens that we will have in our backyard, so to speak. So, that's one of the main concerns that we had, and we only, I only see one other family member from Gibson Pond community here, and of course, we did attend the meetings with the developers a couple of times, and they addressed most of our concerns, but our main concern, one of our main concerns, is how can we get a buffer wall, not the vegetation, but a buffer wall between Gibson Pond and the new subdivision, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. I might ask if, Mr. Trezenberg, or if the applicant, was it, was this an issue that was raised before tonight at a, at a neighbors' meeting? Somebody care to address that? Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. The, the neighbors have engaged in a very reasonable, open-minded conversation about the project, we're very thankful for that. This specific item was raised. Well, talking to traffic first, the question was whether or not we could put a signal at Tryon and Creech, and our issue is that we, we can't decide to put a signal. NCHFA, or excuse me, NCDOT has to let us, and the trips don't necessitate it today. On the topic of a wall, I think we'd be comfortable building less a retaining wall, but more kind of a standard fence on the backside of the parking lot of the Gibson Pond subdivision side of the property. I think it's something that we can continue to communicate with the neighbors about and with staff as we head towards Planning Commission, but it's, it's an issue that's been raised, and it's something that we're absolutely willing to converse about.
Okay, thank you for your response. And Jeff?
I was just going to say, some of it will depend on the final grade, the way the grade works today. It's about, there's a two-hundred, your two-hundred-and-eighty-foot elevation kind of comes through here, and it's two-hundred-and-ninety up here. So, we'll be happy to work with them as to what they propose. Our reaction to that from staff is we usually like to have those screening elements at the higher elevation, because it gives more effect, so in this case, we might actually want to just talk about whether or not, you know, a fence should be on the inside, because it would actually give a taller effect versus in the back. But we can certainly talk about that going forward.
Okay, thanks, okay. Anything else, Mr. Smith?
Oh, no, that's all. Thank you, thank you so much, my boy.
All right, yeah. Okay, anybody else here to speak at this public hearing? If so, let me know now. Okay, any other testimony, Jeff, that you're aware of? Okay, I believe I can close a public hearing at this point in time, and councilor, you see the recommendation of the next action, so is there a motion of that effect?
I move.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to refer this to the planning commission, so the motion properly made and seconded. Ms. Clerk, would you call the roll on this vote? If you favor the motion, obviously, bow-dye.
Mayor pro, Tim Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all, the motion passes unanimously, and so it'll be referred to the planning commission and come back before this council at a future date, so, thank you all. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time, we appreciate it. Okay. All right, the next item is, I believe, Mr. Bowie is our presenter, and this is CZMP two-two-zero-seven, Fayetteville Road, conditional rezoning. Mr. Bowie?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we will be presenting CZMP twenty-two-dash-zero-seven, located at forty-two-oh-two Fayetteville Road. General case information, the applicant is Jing HWA Incorporated. It property is owned by Jing HWA Incorporated, located at forty-two-oh-two Fayetteville Road. It's point-nine-six acres, and this is a tier-two master sketch, sketch plan with written conditions. It's to, to conditionally rezon, point-nine-six acres from service business conditional to service business SBC two-sixty-three conditional for the construction of approximately three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven square-foot commercial building. As you know, in July of this year, the town approved ZTA twenty-two-oh-one and CZ twenty-two-oh-one, which adopted a new unified development ordinance and established new zoning districts. As a result, the request is now amended from commercial mixed-use CMX C nineteen conditional to, to commercial mixed-use CMX C two-sixty-three. You have a aerial view of the location on Fayetteville Road, and it's form, it's the former Grille fifty-seven location. Here we have a street view of the site. As you can see, in each, all directions, all the property is owned commercial mixed-use. To the north, you have North-South Subdiv, North-South Station subdivision. To the south, the same, to the east is Telerent Leasing Corporation, and to, again, to the west is North-South Station. Here's a zoning history of the area around the site. Existing zoning summary, the conditional mixed-use district is generally designed to accommodate general commercial, retail, and service activity, activity that serve the whole community. Ordinance number nineteen-eighty-eight, twenty-two-eighty-nine, adopting a C nineteen conditional district retains all uses that were permissible within the former service business zone district, except the following uses are prohibited, and some of them are flea market, cemetery, municipal sewer treatment plant, and so on. The permitted use table, the applicant has decreased the, the number of uses to sixteen out of possible sixty-eight. And the primary use for what he's coming, what he's applying for is a car wash. Community information, the area of the community is dominated by auto-oriented commercial uses, including big-box stores, strip centers, and standalone enterprises. The area is heavily influenced by the confluence of US seventy and US four-oh-one, two major regional arteries. The project will have approximately two-hundred-and-twelve feet of frontage on Fayetteville Road. Traffic generation from car wash is probably going to be minimal, and is not going to have a substantial impact on the surrounding road. Neighborhood information, sixteen properties were identified within a notification radius, and there was a public, a neighborhood meeting held on June twenty-ninth of this year, and no one was in attendance. As you can see, here's a master plan of the site. Tree canopy cover is on a sliding scale from twelve to fourteen percent, rule at the time of the submitted, and that will be met. The master plan envisions fourteen percent being provided with new tree plantings. Existing mature trees on the site are limited, but are, will be preserved where possible. Perimeter buffers, side-side only, one-half of twenty-five feet, adjacent parcel has their part of the buffer. Street trees must be provided approximately every forty feet along the roadways and private drives on the remaining three sides of the property. There are no FEMA designated floodplains or riparian buffers on the site. Infrastructure, water, and sewer. The development plan will utilize an existing wet retention pond located on the, on the shopping centers sites to a treat additional pervious surface that will be added from the redevelopment. The wet retention pond will satisfy all water quality and water quantity requirements at this site for eighty-five percent TSS removal, and will detain the one, ten, and twenty-five-year storm events. There are no nitrogen offsets payments required for this development. Water and sewer will be, will be served by the city of Raleigh, using existing infrastructure, utilizing existing lines located on the property. Lighting for the streets will be, will have to meet, meet the UDO requirements for LED fixtures. Stormwater management devices will meet UDO regulations. Water lines are hydrospaces required by Garner Fire and Raleigh Water Rules and Regulations, and landscaping and parking will all, will be re-verified to make sure they're, they're in compliance with the UDO. Here you have your plan, plan consistency, and your reasonable statement. Staff recommends that once the council has heard all comments, concerns, and questions from the general public, that conditional zoning request CZMP twenty-two-oh-seven be referred to the planning commission for the review and recommendation regarding plan Are there any questions for me at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. I'll start with Mr. Matthews.
No, sir.
Mr. Singleton?
So we're just starting fresh on this site, they'll be tearing the building down and starting fresh?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Behringer? Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
And Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else, is there applicant here that wishes to speak on this, do you know?
I don't believe the applicant is here. No.
All right, is there anyone, this is a public hearing, from the public who desires to speak on this matter? If so, let me know. Raise your hand. Okay, don't see anyone, okay? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing unless there's anyone else who wants to speak on this issue. Seeing and hearing done, I'll close the public hearing and ask the council for a motion. I believe the proper motion is to refer to the Planning Commission, is that correct? Okay, is there that motion, council?
No motion.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Singleton and seconded by Mr. Matthews. If you favor the motion, we will ask you to answer to the roll call vote. And Ms. Gibson, I'll recognize you.
Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Behringer?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously, and the manner will come back to this council after it has properly been dealt with at the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Okay, let me see, is that the last one? Okay, I have nothing under new and old business, is there anybody, staff members know anything about? All right, we will move to committee reports. I'm not aware of any, but council, or any of you reporting from a committee? Anybody here?
There will be a Public Works Committee meeting this Thursday morning at 8:30. Me and Mr. Vance, yes.
Okay, Thursday morning? Okay.
To discuss issues that we discussed recently about subdivisions. Stop arms, gates, locks, doors, connections, disconnections, unconnections. I'm sure it'll be lively discussion.
Sounds like it will be, okay? Appreciate you two serving there, and we'll look for a report at our next meeting after that, okay?
I believe you'll hear something at the work session. I believe that's the goal.
Sure, good. That'll be great. Okay, if there are no other committee reports, Mr. Manager, the floor is yours for Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council, a number of manager reports. First of all, your quarterly financial report, and Mr. Beck, Finance Director, is here. If you have any questions, I don't know if there's anything in particular you wanna highlight. All right, so we have that. Basically, we're three months in, 25 percent into the budget year, and we've collected about 12.3 percent of estimated revenues, and he's listed some highlights there, so nothing unusual. Next is Talk of the Town Report, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Miller to give you some highlights on that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just a brief review of your October Talk of the Town Report. Just a few things I wanna highlight for you. First, we have several new publications that are out, both in hard copy and electronically. You have a hard copy of the Guide to Garner at the dais with you now, but it's also available online, and it's a great resource for residents, and so I encourage everyone to take a look at it. We also have our Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Annual Report, which you received a copy of a few meetings ago, available online, as well as our Fall and Winter Program Guide for Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources. So, just wanted to highlight those and make you aware that not only are they available in hard copy, but also available in really attractive publications online as well. One of the questions that came up at our last meeting was regarding debris pickup, especially after the hurricane tropical storm Ian kinda came through the area, and just wanted to make council aware that we've been sharing information about debris pickup through social media sites, as well as the Garner update newsletter, and our communications team has been doing a great job with that. There was also this flyer that we sent out as part of utility bills that gives more information about the fall cleanup that's going to happen starting the week of October 31st, and so that we're encouraging those that may have some debris from the storm to either get that out to the curb side, following the guidelines that we have now for our bulk pickup weekly, or they can also move things to the curb starting the week of the 31st, and we'll be doing our big fall cleanup, getting ready for the holidays as well. So more information's available in utility bill as part of the flyer, but also available online, and it'll be following the normal trash or debris removal schedule as well. And then finally, going to the second page of the report, just wanted to briefly touch base with you on the Garner Info monthly analytics. You'll see sort of the analytics for the last 30 days. We only had 18 requests, that's quite a reduced number from the month before, which we had 49 last time, so you can start seeing the seasonality of the requests, not only the number of requests, but the types of requests as well. Of those 18 that have come in in the last 30 days, 83 percent have been completed, and our Public Works Team and our Inspections Team are once again doing a lot of responses to those requests that come in through the Garner Info app. So with that, we're happy to answer any additional questions that the council may have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. Council members, anybody have a question for Ms. Miller on this report?
Great publication, by the way, it's really very informative.
The communication team, headed by our Communications Manager, Rick Mercer, they put that together for us, and it's a great resource, so.
Did we recognize at a previous meeting, and I don't have it in front of me, but our department received some national recognition, give me the details of that, Mr. Jurisdiction.
We received a national recognition for a video with NC, the National Communications Association, and we got a first place for animated video for our Bond Stormwater video, and Kyle Kettler, and communications pretty much crafted that and put that together. He's not in a room right now, but he's in the booth back there, but Rick can give you more information about it.
I would actually be happy to pull Cole out of the room if he were still here, but he's left for the evening. He's really supremely talented, and so he did that animation video for the Stormwater Bonds last year, you may remember. And we got some help with that from Jaclyn, Standard Engineering, on helping us, you know, write the script and make sure it was correct. So, it was a good team effort.
Thanks, sir. And pass a good word along to Mr. Kettler, if you will.
We've won several state awards, but I think that's the first national, first place anyway.
Speaks very well of his work and all those who assist him, so thank you very much. Anything else, Ms. Miller, does that cover?
That is all we have to report. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Hey, y'all, are there any? Ms. Miller?
I would like to echo Councilman Matthews' statement on the Guide to Garner, and the, and great presentation, easy to read, easy to flow, even a good picture of me in there.
Thanks, sir. And Mr. Dellinger, did you have something?
Yeah, a question related to the quarterly financial report, but also sort of linked to data, and it was, you know, with the economy slowing, or potentially slowing, and that looming, we had previously had information on COs that were issued earlier in the year by Mr. Beasley, and then Ms. Howell did some presentation. I just wanna know, when can we expect to sort of get these monthly numbers on growth, basically, so that we can, might help us anticipate changes as we go into next budget year, whether things are slowing down, speeding up, flattening out?
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hodges to answer that. I know we've been looking into.
So, we've had some challenges accessing some of the data that we use for those reports, so we're trying to work through some challenges with that, so I can't give you a specific month that will have that, but we're working to try to be able to get access to that data so we can get in a format that's helpful to you.
I think it'd be helpful even just to manually put in a spreadsheet the COs issued month by month, and start tracking that going forward, so we have trouble getting access to that information. We can at least start looking at it in graphical format to get an idea as to whether our growth is slowing, on the development side, because I think that's gonna be really important information for us to have as we start thinking about the budget next year. So, that'd be my suggestion, is to start tracking at the bare minimum our COs.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe that's all for the manager at this point, is that right?
I have several more items, yeah. I'll run through them pretty quick. Item number, well, let me go back to three. Early voting starts Thursday, October 20th, and runs through Saturday, November 5th, at Avery Street Recreation Center, and if anyone wants any details on that, they can go to the Wake County Board of Election site for times and schedules and those type of things. Item four I will not cover again, Ms. Miller covered the cleanup. The It's Showtime Series at GPAC kicks off on Saturday, October 29th, with the band New Blue, and you can learn about tickets and the performance at the garnerperformingartscenter.com. And we're bringing back Trick or Treat the Trail at White Deer Park. I think, if you remember, last year, I think we held it at the GPAC in an abbreviated version of it, but we're going back to White Deer Park on Monday, October 31st, and that will be from 3:00 to 6:00. And of course, it's free, family-friendly event with trick-or-treaters, and always brings out a good crowd, and we have a lot of businesses that help support that event with stations and booths, and providing a lot of information about what they do. And the last item is the Last Downtown Night Market will be Friday, November 4th, and that's from 5:00 to 9:00.
Okay, and on that previous item, I guess you'll be there with your costume on, is that right?
Yeah, town manager's outfit.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Our attorney?
No report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll do council reports at this time. So, I'll start with Mr. Vance.
Yes, I'd like to say that we had a great ribbon-cutting with Al Nair, the development out on Business Park 70, the huge facility there, that was a great event on last Thursday, along with attending the Oyster Fest as well, another great event going on as well, great fundraising, good to see a lot of people out and about. And going back to echo what was said earlier about what transpired in Raleigh, we need, I would like to keep them in our thoughts and prayers, as they go through this difficult time of bereavement with the loss and with the tragedy that happened on Thursday as well. While we're enjoying great festivities, tragedy's happening right next door. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. I'll go to Mr. Dellinger for any council reports.
No reports, just a quick comment on, I've made some comments at the Parks and Rec Committee and then to council on getting a website for GPAC, and I've noticed some improvements to navigation, at least kind of at an interim basis, that makes it a little easier to navigate and see some things that are going on with GPAC, so I don't know who's responsible for that, but it's a good step forward, so. I don't know who deserves the credit for it, but.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Behringer?
I just have a couple of things. I had a question from the man who owns Lee Shoes and Repair on Farm Road about, he received a letter for a community meeting regarding a potential rezoning for property on the south side of Farm Road, and he asked me if I knew what that was, and I don't, so is there any information? The community meeting was already held, I believe.
Not aware, for me with it, and our planning staff has left.
Okay, all right, I'll call him then. He hadn't heard that it was gonna be a big, tall apartment building, but I told him we, I hadn't heard anything at all about that. Is that Garner's jurisdiction on the south side of Farm Road?
Yes.
ETJ.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'll always encourage anyone to call the number that's on the letter if they have questions, so that we can get information to them in a timely manner.
Right. And what is the progress of the property where Pelican Snowballs is? There's, have we had an application or a community meeting or what about that land being purchased by someone else and building housing? Where are we on that?
I think they're still in review with staff, and it's not come to, it's not ready to come to council at this time.
And one more thing, it was reported to me this past week that the house at the southeast corner of Griffin Street and Main Street, it's a rental property, it used to be owned by Jackie Johns, and the family that lives there, I believe are from Guatemala, and the children, small children, are occasionally seen just walking down Main Street alone with no supervision. There's some question about some construction going on in the back there, whether it's proper or not, and reports of dirty diapers strewn around the yard. So if we can have that, the biggest concern, of course, is the safety of the children.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Gibson, who'd done a wonderful job of rotating our names around tonight, because we're on a roll call meeting, and keeping us on our toes, because she has caught me more than once, not paying attention, because she doesn't call out the same names in the same order, and we had to pay attention to her. So, because it caused us a roll call meeting, she did a wonderful job, and I would like to congratulate her on that tonight, for us keeping us, keeping me looking at you when you're calling the roll, because you've got me and Mr. Matthews, the most recent two that you've gotten a couple of times. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matthews.
I appreciate that, and appreciate you pointing to me, that lets me, if you slide that mic a little closer to you, so war veterans don't hear as well as we used to, but.
There's a new thing out, you can get hearing aids at.
That's what I hear, that's what I hear. But, again, it's good to have the trick-or-treat back in the park again, especially what has been going on, and I know the police department's gonna be a higher presence out there this year, but it's good, clean family time in the daytime, and so kids always have a bless, and it's good to have that back. And I certainly go along with Mr. Vance, as we do remember what happened at Nightdale Raleigh in that shooting, it's just a sad situation, and it's just hard to imagine how those families are dealing with, and it's just a sign of the times, I'm afraid, but our thoughts and prayers, and bless you, are with those families. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Manager, could I mention, I guess, the appearance we're gonna have tomorrow?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, your mayor will be over at the Certificate of Need Hearing of Wake Med, been asked to take a presentation there, and so we'll be over there at around 11 o'clock in the morning, supporting that activity as well. Just on a personal note, most of you, maybe you know, maybe you're not interested in knowing, but any rate, I had a chance to make a little visit down the Mississippi River, and I was thinking, as we were talking about different towns, it was interesting to, the stops along the way to see different towns, and some of them had hanging baskets and flowers that looked nice. Quite nice, and without bragging, when I get a chance to stop in at, you know, town halls at different places, I was in St. Paul's, Minnesota yesterday with a tour, went up to the mayor's office, he wasn't there, but they gave me one of their nice little pens, so I like to collect those over the years, and usually have one in my pocket to give to them, but I didn't this time, so at any rate, your mayor's enjoying, meeting others from other places, and it was a very nice trip. Thank you for letting me get away.
You didn't go down the river, you went up the river.
You're right, you're right, exactly, I should've said.
Because you told me you were starting about in St. Louis or somewhere, wasn't that right?
Yeah, started starting in St. Louis, and we disembarked in Red Wing, Minnesota, which is pretty close to, well, it's an hour's. About a city with high-rise buildings in it, and they built these, what do you call them, these skywalks in a good portion of cities where people don't have to go outside, you can tie buildings together with that. It's an interesting concept, sure enough. So, at any rate, and that was a very entertaining trip. That's all I have. Do we don't have a closed session tonight that I'm aware of, is that correct? So, I believe the last thing is adjournment, so is there a motion to that effect?
No motion.
Do we need to do roll call on that, Ms. Manager? I mean, Ms. Attorney, yeah. Okay, all in favor of the adjournment motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Including Mr. Dellinger, thank you. All right, I declare this meeting of the corner of Town Council to be fully adjourned. Thank you all for your time. Got through the agenda pretty expeditiously tonight, so appreciate everybody's participation. Got through the agenda pretty expeditiously tonight, so appreciate everybody's participation.